My colleagues, me and the board all rise for the pleasant weakness. Just look in this direction.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you all can just remain standing for a moment of solid reflection for the three marines that have recently been killed in action on the April 8th. Thank you, please have a seat. Your call please.
Carl Lovich.
Here.
Reiner.
Here.
Kramer. Reese.
Here.
Easter.
Are there any audience comment, is there any audience comment on agenda items on the agenda tonight? At this time, I'd like to present a proclamation on behalf of the YMCA. Whereas the Millen YMCA was founded in 1889 and the Sunbury YMCA was founded in 1891. And whereas the Millen and Sunbury YMCA operated independently of each other in 1993. When the Greater Susquehanna Valley YMCA was formed and the two YMCA's merged together. And whereas the Greater Susquehanna Valley YMCA began running programs in Union County. About eight years ago, a program center opened in Mifflinburg. And in February 2018, a program center opened in Lewisburg. And whereas the Sunbury YMCA opened a one-of-a-kind and unique art center on South Fifth Street in Sunbury in November 2005. And whereas our YMCA's provide quality, affordable childcare and have programs available to working families regardless of their income. And whereas collectively in the Greater Susquehanna Valley, the YMCA serves 4,000 kids and teens. Providing a wide range of activities to nurture potential, including teen clubs, sports leagues, family nights, and community service projects. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Kurt Carl Lovich, being Mayor of the City of Sunbury, County of Northumberland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on behalf of Sunbury City Council members and citizens do hereby proclaim April 22, 2019, as Sunbury YMCA Day. I make this into a motion to accept this proclamation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Reiner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Easter. Carl Lovich.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to introduce our CEO of the Greater Susquehanna Valley YMCA, Bonnie McDowell.
Thank you. That's really great that we have our own tech. Why is it tech? Cool. Thanks so much. Well, I'm very curious. Does anybody here remember when this building was built? Does anybody know? It was built in 1959. Does anybody?
I wasn't even bothered.
Not even bother?
Anybody would be doing.
So if before this building was built, the Y was housed downtown on Market Street, really close to the city building. You can still see YMCA etched in stone over the doorway of the building. I think Dr. Emery is in there, a couple of things going on. So that's, it's really neat that that history is downtown. When YMCA's were first built, the first YMCA in this country was 1852. And now Sunbury Y is one of 2,700 YMCA's in the country. And when they were first built or first came around were near railroad stations. So that's why the original Y was downtown. The story that I've heard over the years is that when the money was raised to build a new Y, they were building it out in the country. That this is, why do you want to build a YMCA way out in the country? Like that's how it was looked at in this area out here. As a matter of fact, this area was all swampy. That's also why I was told the YMCA or the Y built a pool on the second floor. So it's very unusual that there are swimming pools on the second floor. And if anybody would like to say for a tour after the meeting, you can go just to the front desk and we'll be glad to show you around the Y. It's really changed since 1959. There's a lot of great programs and things going on here. Our locker rooms were renovated just about a year ago, so we'd love to show you around. But this part of the city has really turned and developed into a lot of great recreation opportunities for our community and we're really proud to be a part of that. The Y in our facility here, we are a lot more than just a gym and swim. All of our programs are around three key areas of focus. And that's youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. So we have childcare programs. We have a 90-child daycare center in the Y and it's filled with a waiting list. We have before and after school care. We have summer day camp. We have, of course, in our pool, aquatic classes, our healthy living from youth programs, youth sports, martial arts, all the way up through to Silver Sneakers. Katrina's our membership director. She's in the back room. She also teaches cycling in our Silver Sneakers classes. I think our youngest member is six weeks old and our oldest, our most senior member is 90. So, and everybody in between. And that's what we're really proud of at the Y is that we're for all. And that's what our mission is and that's what our board believes in. That nobody has ever turned away from the Y, any of our programs or services due to the inability to pay. So all of our programs and services are available to anyone. We have an annual fundraiser to raise money to help underwrite the assistance. So if you know someone who would like a membership or services or programs at the Y and can't afford it, they can just come into the Y and ask for an application for financial assistance and we'll be glad to talk to them. Because we want our doors to be open for everybody. Some of the programs that I just want to highlight real quick, as you mentioned, our art center downtown on Fifth Street. If you've never been, please stop by. It's a gem. There aren't any other YMCA's in the country that have an art center like that. Tons of great programs going in there for all ages. Summer camps are filled already for art programming. It's a really great place. We have a second grade learn to swim program that's funded by the Spreading Antlers Foundation and was founded with the help of Judge Wies and Karen Wies. We're really proud of that program. Every single second grader in Shiklemye School District receives a free swimming license, eight weeks. That is absolutely going to save a life someday. We have over 1,000 kids that have been through the program because it's offered for Shiklemye, Line Mountain, Milton, and Lewisburg School Districts as a second grader. So we're really proud of that program. We do a big coat drive every year before Thanksgiving. We accept coat donations all year long and then this room, you can barely walk through. We have coats hanging everywhere and the public's invited to come in at no charge to get a free coat that are dry cleaned by Steiner. So it's a clean coat and we have a lot of other accessories that are donated to. And lastly, I'll just tell you about a few special events we have coming up that draw people into the city. This Saturday is our Healthy Kids Day. It's a huge event where the Y is filled with vendors that come in to provide activities and projects for kids. We're going to have a big bouncy house outside for the kids to play in and there's a lot of fun activities during that day. We also have a 5K coming up in June and our bike race. Do we have any bike races that, August? Yeah. So lots of information on our website. And of course, we could do all that we do without our volunteers. We depend on volunteers a lot at the Y too. We have a crew coming in with United Way on Friday that are going to help repaint our group exercise room. And we depend on volunteers to be on our board and serve on our committee. So if anybody's ever interested in volunteering at the Y, we'd love to have you. Thank you very much for hosting your meeting here with us. We're glad to have you visit and feel free to take a look around after the meeting. There's program information on the table if you want.
And thank you for allowing me to use this space for this. One more proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be a set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Kurt Carl Lovich, being Mayor of the City of Sunbury, Councilor of Northumberland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on behalf of Sunbury City Council members and citizens, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2019 as Arbor Day. I make this into a motion to accept. Do I have a second?
Reese.
Yes.
Carl Lovich.
Yes.
Reiner.
Yes.
Easter.
And if you stay towards the end, we do have baby saplings of dogwood trees available for free if you'd like to take one plant. Discussion. Alright, so I have received regarding the official city flag update, I have received from 12, I've received 12 different participants, I've received 12 different participants submissions for a first-ever official Sunbury City Flag design. And all of the council speakers, you will find the design and the flag description for each. I recommend council to review all the flag designs that have been submitted and bring back your feedback to our next city council meeting. And remember, we can't accept a flag in its entirety or combine certain parts of different flag submissions to form our own official city flag for Sunbury. Is there any comment on that at all? Regarding the Sunbury City Cemetery, I have been going through old city documents and books for research. My office receives numerous requests to view the original records for research purposes. I have found that these documents have been damaged over time and are deteriorating. I like wanting to preserve these precious and historical documents and have completed a recent project in mind. All the original city cemetery documents have been copied, scanned, digitally safe, and uploaded and available on our city website for viewing. The records range from 1907 to 1940. I have also found that we have two prior US congressmen buried in our city cemetery. US Congressman Louis Stewart from 1831 to 1833 and US Congressman William Louis Stewart, 1857 to 1859, a father and son. They both were also on our Borough of Sunbury Council in the 1800s. I will be continuing my research and review and protecting further original documents. Ms. Ockert, regarding boards and commissions.
Sorry, can we need for two minutes?
The director.
Oh.
Alright, I wanted to talk about our boards, commissions, and committees. What I found in my first three months here is trying to get straight, where, who are the boards and committees and commissions and what are their responsibilities? And I found that some have very well-defined responsibilities that are in the city ordinance or in the third-class city code. And others, I can find no written kind of documentation of their purpose or scope of responsibilities. So I really talked it all over with our solicitor and recommend that we do establish a process for when we create a committee. For instance, the New Year's Eve Committee, the Heart and Heritage Festival Committee, that there really should be a document that establishes the relationship with the city in writing in a form of a charter or a memorandum of understanding to understand what is the, what is that committee's authority? What is its responsibilities? Is it a limited committee where after the event is over, it then is disbanded? Or is it an ongoing board of some sort that will continue and to do a specific function or provide a specific service for the city on behalf of the city? So to get this going, I'm recommending to the council and I guess seeking your guidance and I'd like to review and pull together a list of all of our boards, committees so that I can go through each one, find their documentation. If I find that any are missing some, I can help draft a memorandum that would cover that particular committee. Of course with, you know, coordinating with council members that might be concerned with that particular function. And then ultimately, I would recommend that we move toward establishing a city ordinance and city code that will cover when a committee is established, there shall be a written understanding of the scope of responsibilities, purpose. Not only that, what authority, do they have the authority to make the decisions? Do they report back to the council? What's the accountability? Especially if there are funds involved. When there's an organization, a committee that's working under the city's EIN number. So they're not their own 501(c)(3), but they work under our tax exempt number. We should then also provide some oversight of their funds, how they get them, how they use them, because we would have some sort of liability in that case.
Alright, well can I just make this into a motion to allow our city administrator to go through and sort all of our, everything that she just said? I'll start.
Reese.
Yes.
Easter. Carl Lovich.
Yes.
Okay, so this is an issue that came up where a business is interested in having assigned parking spaces in a municipal lot. So when I researched to see how do we make that happen, I found that there actually is no provision in our ordinances or in the fee schedule to designate specific parking spaces for a specific business. So first, as part of this discussion, we're going to have it, then there is an actual request that you vote in council to go on later. The first part of this is to again, request guidance from the council in what should the fee schedule be for police reserve spaces? What are the parameters as far as if you have a city lot that has X number of spaces? How many of them? What percentage should be reserved for any specific business? Is this in theory what we want to be doing? Because part of being in the central business district is having the flexibility of that shared parking with the other businesses. You also have to keep in mind that there are residents that live in downtown Sunbury in the apartments that need to have room to park their vehicles. So there would have to be maybe particular hours that those are enforced for those businesses. Again, there's details that need to be worked out, I think, in order to be able to have, then have a process for a business to apply to have specific spaces or, you know, the council to decide, you know what, we don't want to get into this at all. There will be no designated spots for businesses. So I have to go back now and also as part of the context, say that there has been some precedent set for this where a business, State Farm Insurance Company that's on Market Street. This is not the State Farm associated with Councilman Reese. It's a separate business, so he has no interest in this whatsoever. They have three spaces in the Edison Plaza parking lot for which they are paying a fee. And that fee that they have been paying is $10 per month per space. So for their three spaces, they're paying $360 for the year. And he buys that permit for the year and he has signs posted in front of those spaces for State Farm only. There are some other organizations that have been given designated spaces through contract with the city that was voted on through, through council, established through council. So I guess the question is, do we want to establish a process by which a business can apply to have designated parking spaces in municipal lots only, not on the metered street spaces? That spoken for discussion or?
We already have it. You just mentioned State Farm, the address or medical center behind City Hall, the current parking.
Right.
The all contracts.
State Farm's not a contract, right?
There's no, but that's no getting.
The Korean's contract.
That's probably at least.
What if you can make any of them private?
Or it be an ordinance that says, if you want a space, this is what it is. We'll give this percentage of space per lot and this is the fee. But there's nothing out there right now that says that. I think that's the point.
And then also the welfare office has. He buys permits.
They've bought permits.
Yes.
I think that was, that was a part of the contract with the Commonwealth and the owner of the building. Provided 25 parking and that's one.
And so do they then, this is one I wasn't aware of, do they then pay the city?
The landowner, which I think is Nor Brothers from out in the school by the way, something like that, pays part of the agreement with capital. They will buy, purchase 25 a month from the city. So they purchased those, those parking, that's from the city.
Alright, I had not been aware of them and I didn't.
Or?
Where does that money go? General. I just leave it in over.
I think it would be kind of like where city administrator is offering, kind of look into this to make sure it's across the board, we're charging everyone equally. Because right now, from just what she's saying, it's less than what we charge a resident for their monthly permits for parking.
I won't comment on the pricing just because I don't have any interest in that. But because it's a competitor technically, I'm not going to comment on the fee. But as far as the, I do think we need to establish a percentage. If you, if we're going to go down the right, down the road of putting a fee, I think we need to put a percentage of, let's say, no more than 40% of spaces per lot. That's just an arbitrary number. Will be given for blocked off usage. So that way, if it's 10 spaces in a lot, we'll only give four. If it's 20, you know, we'll give A, whatever it is, however big each lot is. That way, there's a standard precedent across all lots no matter the size. And then that number we've got that they've come up with, I don't think we should just fly it off now. It should probably take some time and then do research.
And we do have to remember that the Edison Plaza, majority of it is being used by our police department.
Yes.
For parking spaces.
Right.
So that would factor into the percentage where we, we'd have to see how many can we actually sell.
So for instance, the Edison Plaza parking lot has 40 spaces. 14 of them are anticipated for police parking only. There are two handicap spaces. There are three for the State Farm and that means there's 21 that are open. And that would be for use of anybody who has bought a permit.
So if we, again, using 40%, let's say that was the arbitrary number, the spaces that were allocated for that are already filled. So then we have to see if we're over the 40%, what do we do? And if 40, or 50, or 60, whatever the number we have to come up with. So we, I don't think we can do anything until we have an actual process in place rather than just handing out spots. Because then it's, every business in market wouldn't get a fair shot to be able to get them, in my mind. So, and with many businesses that have been there for a long time. So if we put a policy in place, this is the policy, and then start offering it. Whoever comes to get it comes first at that point.
And from my understanding, it's like it's just the non-motor blocks.
Yes, that's.
We sell.
Is that correct? Jim, that is correct, right?
Yes. And I think then Chris, at that point, would you go back to what Jody, let her get some time for it, you're looking at.
Yeah, I think 30 days. So if we're at the end of April now, so the first meeting in June, will that be alright with you?
It's fine. There's a time there might be specific.
Yeah.
And I think the next one in line, if you, Jody, for your air, it's always a table.
Okay.
To go over the decision.
Okay.
And that way, because I know there's going to be some issues that stands up to State Farm where the dollars they're paying doesn't equal to, I know you want to stay out of it, but nobody's got a job. And the other thing, in terms of what I was saying, with this type of ordinance, whatever we're going to do, the things I would suggest are, number one, somebody needs to have authority to grant these permits without having to come to a meeting and enter into a full contract whereby we'll create a page-length contract of some sort. But I think that contract has to state that the permits can be revoked under either emergency circumstances or with 30 days notice by either party. Because, for example, in the Edison Plaza, if the police by a boss need to park it there, we need to have space and deal with those. Also, obviously, you know, for the fire, for whatever, we need to park there, be a parker. Or stove removal. That's what I would suggest, is we write up some kind of ordinance with a set fee and just everybody enters that contract. I have it.
You have a copy?
Yeah, I didn't know this was going to be a subject.
No, yeah, but just finish the order.
I do, I have it.
And that way you can see how it's written in the plan. And then, well, the welfare office just plays and provides permits. That is a factor. And that's in fate, they use their permits in the metered lot.
But don't we sell, we sell a permit for meters. I think those are different.
Right, so look.
That's a different permit.
Yeah, I don't believe that the monthly permits.
So here's, here, let me clarify. Currently on the fee schedule, a monthly parking pass for the municipal lots is $25 a month on the fee schedule. Annual parking pass, any meter, is $360 annually.
So that's just for the municipal parking lots of the month?
So they're $25 a month.
Okay.
And the treasurer handles that right now, the treasurer's office handles it.
Correct.
So if we work that that one, it's the treasurer.
I didn't want to say it. I should also rethink the street number for parks and break, just to make sure that they're.
There would be a limit of the parking.
There's limits of the policy regulations for that. Because treasurer's obviously going to know if there's still available parking.
Why, they would just give someone the parking spot per lot. I think that's clear ahead of time. And then know it's not being available and when they're gone, they're gone. I mean, I think that's the only way to do it, leaving it out the screen.
Okay.
Alright, next one.
Ah, yes, okay. So this also is attached to a vote on a fee waiver. So I just wanted to actually have a discussion about the policy first, the ordinance first, before we get to the voting part. So there is a peddling and soliciting permit license that is required for activities that are selling food, printed, any printed matter, services, goods, wares, merchandise, of any description. There are occasions when there is an organization such as in this case, oh, I'm sorry, and there are exceptions to that. And those exemptions are just, just have the fee waived. They still have to register. They still have to fill out the paperwork. Still make sure that they have their health certificate, but they can have the fee waived. And that is for farmers engaged in selling only the produce of their own farms, individuals, organizations engaged in the sale of goods, wares, merchandise that have been donated by the owner thereof. And the proceeds are to be applied to any charitable or philanthropic purpose. So people selling stuff, donating stuff and selling it for charity, for money that will be donated to charity, charity, or farmers. So I have an organization that is doing either of those things, but they are providing a charitable service to our public in providing free meals. So they are not getting any money. There's no proceeds coming out of this event. And so therefore, in my opinion, they should be exempt. It doesn't currently say that in the current list of exemptions. So I have a recommendation to the council that we amend the ordinance so that it states something to the effect that individuals or organizations engaged in the sale or free distribution of goods, wares, services, etc., that the proceeds whereof are to be applied to any charitable or philanthropic purpose or from which there are no proceeds generated. That they also should be included in having their fee waived. Does that make sense, what I'm explaining? Okay. So if you would, so if you want to have me make that adjustment to the ordinance, then you can make that motion and I would do that.
And I believe when they got to a point where we did break that.
This just puts it in the ordinance, so he doesn't have to apply every year to have it waived.
Yeah, and there's other ones that found they're eligible technically. We've never gotten anything from that. And actually, we've designated it as action.
Does this get to a right motion?
Second. I should have more questions. Just give the right order then. Anybody to apply, get waived, and just leave things at the door. Does that become a nuisance at any point?
I think that's just soliciting.
Well, this is kind of against us.
Right, let's see. That is a separate thing.
That's a separate thing.
Yeah. It does describe that differently and I will make sure of that. That's when I go through this process.
Do we have specific things we have to deal with? In a couple, three years, we have to commence that process.
And Joe, that is providing to show food licenses and food controls.
Yes, that means that they still have to come to the code office. They still have to fill out all the application. They just don't have to pay the fee. Carl Lovett?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Okay, business.
So we're good with that then?
So we tabled, yeah, and we tabled the next one, the new business?
Yep.
And then the next one is impeding and soliciting fee waiver for Dodge Chuck Wagon, which we now we can, I don't know, we need to vote on it since we don't have ordinance or, that was to amend the ordinance?
Or is this to waive the current fee?
To waive the current fee.
Make the motion to waive the fee for Dodge Chuck Wagon.
Second.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister, Farlowe.
Yes.
Before we go, I assume you guys are, the audience knows Dodge Chuck Wagon is a gentleman from Chomoken. And a couple of years back, we went from the Sunbury, one day a week, for a few hours, they give three million dollars. And that's how this all came about, he's coming back to the city. I think this is my closest neighbor that he's been to.
Do you ever take notice to the short plus that come in part, that's what they're doing, they help in our residents? So in your folders, you will see a photo of the amphitheater. And a quote. "I've received a quote on two different three D aluminum sign sizes for our Jesse C. Woodring Memorial Amphitheater. I recommend choosing the fifteen by twenty inch design, the cost of the sign, a clear code protected, which will protect it in case of repeated issues. The design and professional installation by the company comes out to several hundred and ninety-one dollars. I've spoken with the Sunbury Municipal Authority relating to the future location of the sign, and there is no issue. The data on the bottom of the sign and the quote will change whenever it's ready for installation. I make a motion to accept the fifteen by twenty inch amphitheater sign for purchase and to install it on the river facing side of the amphitheater on the top tier section closest to the cement steps where the arrow is pointing." Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I talked to the family, spoke to them a year, months ago, and they asked me to grow this and acquire it too, to make sure we seen it before. Have you spoke to the family yet?
Not since they gave me the okay, that this was good.
No, I spoke to them after you spoke. How long you have to work on these from the river to the.
It's tabled. Will it, uh, make a motion if Jim Meister gets the okay from the family, then we accept this quote for the sign.
Yep, this, this sign is flat in the ground?
It's a flat, it'll be against the amphitheater.
So we'll draw it out. Okay, okay, yeah.
Okay, right there?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister? Farlowe?
Yes.
Whereas the city of Sunbury in Pennsylvania is recipient of federal funds from numerous sources, including community development block grant, CUPG. Whereas the city of Sunbury is statutory required to develop administrative procedures and regulations in accordance with Twenty Four's CFR Part Eight Code of Federal Regulations as infatuated on July eleventh, nineteen eighty-eight, to implement Section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three. Whereas the city of Sunbury must designate a Section five oh four compliance officer who will serve as the city's designated representative for any and all complaints regarding Twenty Four CFR Part Eight of the Code of Federal Regulations and adopt grievance procedures. Whereas the city of Sunbury has begun public outreach and consultation with interested parties to solicit input and feedback regarding the city's compliance with administrative rules and regulations related to Section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three. Now therefore, it is resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the city of Sunbury as follows. Jody Arthur is hereby designated as the city's Section five oh four compliance officer. Two, the city has adopted a grievance procedure for any and all complaints regarding accessibility to all city-owned facilities and programs. I hereby certify that the above is a true and correct copy of resolution adopted by the greater media of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Sunbury in the name of the city and make a motion to accept this resolution.
Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister? Farlowe?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, turn your left.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, may I please the council? I'm here as a best solicitor for the redevelopment authority and special counsels in the city regarding redevelopment authority update. A few housekeeping matters, sort of thing with the government floor regarding the redevelopment authority. We have a couple of resolutions this evening at the last RA meeting through discussion with the code officer Eric Long and problem properties that he's identified through his work and other research with the RA. The RA submits a resolution to add four properties to the public nuisance property list. And of course, the procedure for doing that would be city council acting as the port of help. So the resolution provides as follows. Whereas the city council of the city of Sunbury has the legal authority to declare properties a public nuisance pursuant to third class city code, eleven PS, section one, two, three, two, zero. And whereas the property owners of the properties listed in exhibit A and located in the city of Sunbury have received numerous citations, warnings, and correspondence from the city of Sunbury owners for failure to bring their property within the code standards. And whereas the city council takes this action by formally acting as a port of help pursuant to eleven PS, section one, two, three, zero, one. Therefore, it will be resolved as follows. One, the city council of the city of Sunbury acts as port of help pursuant to statute in adopting the resolution. Two, the city council declares that the properties listed in exhibit A are located in the city of Sunbury and are in such a condition so as to be detrimental to the public health and therefore pursuant to third class city code constitute public nuisances. The code enforcement office shall be designated to proceed with abatement of the public nuisance at the properties with notice to be served on the property owners and all lien holders of the properties listed in the exhibit pursuant to third class city code. And four, the city of Sunbury and the city of Sunbury redevelopment authority are authorized to proceed with eminent domain proceedings against any public nuisance property that is not abated by the owner following the provisions of the third class city code. And the mayor will be authorized to sign any and all necessary documents to facilitate the eminent domain proceedings. Again, this is just the, the first serious step that we take regarding antiquated properties. These properties have not been maintained and, and on that recommendation placed on the list. And if you stand by just a moment, we've got some good news, but that's the first resolution being presented. Council, would you like to?
Can we get motion?
Second.
Carl Lovett?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
I'd just like to get a gentleman here real quick. The homeowners up in the Hill section, it's five and a half years that I've been on council, I need to work on getting this done. And the scaffolding, the house with all that scaffolding up over there is on the list for today.
Thank you.
But that's sometimes how long it takes to get the prices.
And as advertised, and I think council is well aware, because you've seen this happen before, by putting a property on the public nuisance list, certainly, property owners get motivated to address the issues that they have neglected for so long. So happy to report that we have a major success story located in four thirty-nine Reagan Street. And we actually have a resolution to remove that property from the public nuisance list. And that resolution provides as follows. Whereas the city, city council of the city of Sunbury has the legal authority to declare properties a public nuisance pursuant to third class city code. Whereas the property located at four thirty-nine Reagan Street in Sunbury was declared a public nuisance property back in two thousand and sixteen. And whereas the property owner of four thirty-nine Reagan Street in Sunbury has actively worked with the city of Sunbury code enforcement office to bring the property up to code within the code standards. And whereas the city of Sunbury and the city of Sunbury redevelopment authority would like to recognize that the property located at four thirty-nine Reagan Street in Sunbury has successfully completed the requirements to be removed from the public nuisance list and should be seen as a success story for the city of Sunbury's blighted property program. And whereas city council takes this action by formally acting as a port of help pursuant to eleven PS, section one, two, three, one. It would be resolved as follows. One, the city council of the city of Sunbury hereby acts as port of help pursuant to third class city code in adopting this resolution. And the city council declares that the property located at four thirty-nine Reagan Street in Sunbury, PA, is no longer a public nuisance property.
So make this a new motion to accept this resolution.
Ister?
Yes.
Carl Lovett?
Yes.
Right there? Yes. Reese?
And we have a third proposed resolution that really is housekeeping that tidies up the first two resolutions. What it will do is update the current list as of this moment right now. So it will include the addition of the four properties from the first resolution. It will subtract four thirty-nine Reagan Street as it's up to the second resolution. And so this will provide a current list of forty-one properties that will be on the public nuisance list that the RA is aware of and the code office is attempting to work with to resolve the property issues. This resolution provides. Whereas the city council of the city of Sunbury has the legal authority to declare properties a public nuisance pursuant to third class city code. And whereas the property owners, certain properties previously designated as public nuisance properties have been put on notice to bring the property within the code standards. And whereas the city council wishes to maintain a current list of the properties to improve coordination with the city of Sunbury code office, Sunbury redevelopment authority, Sunbury police department, and the property owners to best assist addressing the code issues at those properties. And whereas the city council wishes to declare that the properties located in the city of Sunbury and listed in exhibit A represent the current public nuisance property list as of the date of this resolution. And whereas city council takes this action by formally acting as a port of help pursuant to eleven PS, section one, two, three, zero, one. It is resolved as follows. One, city council acts as port of help. Two, city council declares that the properties located and listed on the exhibit constitute public nuisances pursuant to third class city code and comprise the city's public nuisance property list as of this date. And three, the code enforcement office shall be designated to proceed with abatement of public nuisance at the properties with notice to be served on the property owners and all lien holders of the properties listed in the exhibit pursuant to the third class city code. And four, the city of Sunbury and city of Sunbury redevelopment authority are authorized to proceed with eminent domain proceedings against any public nuisance property that is not abated by the owner following the provisions of the statute. And the mayor will be authorized to sign any and all necessary documents to facilitate domain proceedings.
Make a motion?
Second.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister? Farlowe?
Yes.
And that will conclude the redevelopment authority.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Mr. Mayor, may I be excused?
Yes, thank you.
I had to be at home. Have a good night.
All right, Councilman Ister?
Yes, in the subsequent valley derby, Dixon, Little Derby League. Question open to the chairman on the grounds of the ice skating rink. Dates May twenty-fifth, June first, July twentieth, August twenty-fourth, December the seventh.
You have a current year.
This is eighteen nineteen. And what just would consist of the line, where do you consume on the premise of those activities? Questions, and of course, the twenty-one year. Has it been done before, or you just request an attorney?
Make a motion to accept this?
Thank you.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Carl Lovett?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Next thing on the agenda, Mr. Mayor. The contract with Enbelle for fireworks for the area. Displaying on time. Anyhow. Third thing, yes. To make a motion that we sign the contract yourself and some of the deposits in dollars for that.
Just real quick, the funds for this, are they out of the city or are they out of the National Record?
No, not the National Record, it's funded, we have set up.
The funds are there, so we're not, I just want to make sure that I'm fair.
Ister?
Yes.
Carl Lovett?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
All right, Councilor Reese.
Can I, can I slow things down for one second? Can you go back to the Little Derby theme real quick? The only, it says in this resolution that a showing of acceptable insurance is required naming the city of Sunbury. Sunbury is additional insured in the amount specified by city council, we better specify it now.
Yes, that's too much to be made.
It's not, when they do their contract, they're, sorry.
When they do their initial contract, that has the amount of insurance.
Okay, so it's already specified. All right, it just said here that I specified, I want to make sure we did that. The other thing is, the Sunbury Community Pool and Ice Cream, that's the whole facility? Or are they only allowing alcohol at the ice cream?
I think that's ice cream, not school.
Okay, that's why I'm asking, because it says the Community Pool and Ice Cream in the resolution section.
I think that you should, that was named.
That's the name of the place, okay, just ask them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was making sure we're safe. All right, Councilor.
So we have two applications for road closures for Market Street. One is for River Festival on August sixteenth and seventeenth, and the other is for National Layout on August sixth. Make a motion to accept these applications for road closures.
Second.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Farlowe?
Yes.
Councilor, right, can I tell you?
Okay, I'm going to pass this on to the, the subdivision, Mike.
Okay. Council, four fifteen, I received an application for people associates, Mr. Klein from the organization or company is here tonight in attendance, for a subdivision that the property owners nail with the bomb, would like to subdivide their property located at one oh five one oh seven North Twelfth. With that, the application and the plan were reviewed by the Sunbury Municipal Authority, water sewer. It was reviewed by Motleywood County Planning. It was also approved by the zoning hearing board, because there were some issues, because we're dividing a two-family attached dwelling to a two-single family, semi-attached dwelling, so there were some zoning issues that we corrected. And then the city engineer also approved it, and last Thursday our city planning commission approved. We're here tonight just asking for final approval, so I get the mayor to send the software to sign the plans so we can get them to, get them recorded and put over. Mr. Klein, do you have anything to add?
No, I think we'd love to be familiar with the street that it's on, one oh five, one oh seven, I'm botched, Klein, sir. One oh five, one oh seven North Twelfth Street. It's, the neighborhood, there are mostly double homes, and the bones own this property at one, on one D, a whole double. And it was their desire to subdivide it through the partition law and divide the lot into two separate lots. So it's, it's common with the neighborhood, there's nothing strange about this subdivision, so.
I'd make a motion to accept the findings of the municipal authority, the zoning board, and our city engineer and allow this subdivision, sorry.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Carl Lovett?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Since Councilwoman Kramer is present, I make a motion to approve the paid invoices and vouchers payable report of general fund of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and five cents, and liquidated fund of twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-three cents. About a second.
Ister?
Yes.
Carl Lovett?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
All right, announcements, dog feces in Cameron Park and all city parks. It has come to my attention, I volunteered some time to help put out the Easter eggs on Saturday, and there is someone bringing their dog to Cameron Park, and they are not picking up after it. It is a very large pile, to the point it has disgusted me by now. It is a very large pile to the point it has been disgusted me by dogs. If you are not a responsible dog owner, do not bring your dogs to our parks. If you are caught not picking up your dogs, you will be cited. If you're a responsible dog owner, please enjoy our city parks and walk your dog on a leash. Thank you. Our upcoming city council meetings, May 13, 2019, will be at City Hall, council chambers. May 27, 2019, there is no meeting in observance of Memorial Day. The next Hart and Heritage 250th anniversary committee meeting is April 24th at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. The New Year's Eve committee meeting is May 22 at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. Our current sponsors are the Sunbury Eagles, Spy 03, Spyglass Winery, Sunbury Motors, and the city of Sunbury. The three city cleanup days at the Sunbury Municipal Authority is beginning this week. It's 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, April 23, 25, the 30th, and May 2nd. National Suicide Prevention Lifeline is 1-800-273-8255. Is there any... And May 11th at 5:00 PM, WXWC4 Pro Wrestling will be at the Americas. Is there any audience comment?
I just heard a lot of children back to, we're not accepting refrigerators, air refrigerators and so forth. I think we start looking around because there's been a lot of calls, where can we get rid of? And I must take them from Milton last time. And I'm not sure if that place is open anymore. I think it was a fee of 10 or 15 dollars per item for TV. And then mine was township had, uh, about two years ago, had a program, we're there for a weekend. But we can find somewhere, I think there's a mark on paper, somebody's paper or yesterday's paper regarding, uh, I believe the danger paper, actually, I'm sorry, uh, even the recital will become a problem to rid of. So, as we start researching, find out where we can take and tell our residents where they can take their TVs and so forth instead of throwing them off, clean them up and then decide what kind of...
I'd like to... Are those dates accurate? Because on the site it said the 22nd, the 24th, the 1st, and I can't remember the date on two of that.
That was, those were last year's dates?
Okay, so they, okay, I'm sorry, because I just checked it out the day, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, but it's the Tuesday, Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, uh, is there any audience comment? Please.
One of the more properties ever were added to the public service. Where they have...
Uh, well, it could run with 539 Reagan Street.
All right, it's 539 Reagan Street, 1038 East Chestnut Street, 1144 Marcus Street, 1253 Highland Avenue.
12 what? 1253?
1253 Highland. Is there, um, any other audience comment?
Yeah.
Please stand, that's your main.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. First, I'd like to thank you for following up, uh, with the Woodring Memorial. Second, I'd like to commend you also for the recent project in identifying the area residents and veterans who are buried in the cemetery. Um, are you getting your information from the small room and the library where they have the history?
No, they, um, these are historical books that the city has at City Hall.
Um, I, I was hoping, and I had asked this, uh, of the former mayor and council, if they could coordinate and work with the historical society in identifying a lot of those headless or tombstones. Uh, you can't see the names. And, uh, during my time of campaigning, I went through the cemetery with a group that goes through there annually and they place the flags on the tombstone, the headless, uh, headstones, I don't know how you want to identify it. But you can barely see the names, the war that they fought in. And maybe the city can, um, get a grant and try to work on that because it is, it's, the place is full of veterans from World War I to the Civil War and present, Vietnam as well.
I have reached out to our state representative's office to help with the search regarding this because it's such notable people in the history of it. It goes back to late 1700s, that cemetery does. That is the issue with these really old cemeteries that over time the tombstones do deteriorate. And I think we are on the right process by starting to protect these documents and making them available for the public to help assist with this.
Thank you very much.
Some of those documents, they, they specify which lot, which lot each one is in?
There are some documents that list names, most of them are unknown, but, um, we do have a lot of them, so.
I'll make just one quick question. The 41 properties, is there...
We have, we have, I'm sorry, even though if we know you for the official, we do have to do...
Deborah, that is. I'm just, uh, inquiring about the 41 properties. Is there a list somewhere that we can go and revise as a, as the public to just look at or get a copy of?
They're going to that city hall.
Oh, I'm...
Should get a copy on the back of that, if you have a copy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, it is on the back, follow over on there?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And then, what's that?
Do we have...
Okay, okay. And Joey, I was just concerned about the, um, the parking ordinance with people from, you know, what, what, where are you planning on putting permit parking? Is it just in that Edson Plaza or is it on Side Street? I saw that Lisa's Salon was one of the places that, um, you wanted to put permit parking for.
So, right, so they were, they were requesting to have two designated spaces and were only considering putting designated spaces in municipal lots, not on the streets.
Right.
Okay, good, because I'm thinking, how are we going to do this? A lot of women open up, you know, beauty spas in their own home, and if everybody wants to obtain two or three spots, you know.
This is only, only municipal.
Okay, I got you, I thought I was going to ask. Thank you.
Joe Bartelo. Um, I think the parking ordinance thing, uh, reserved spots is a terrible idea, especially in the central business district. I mean, that's not fair to all the other businesses that are relying on that parking for, you know, pretty soon you'll have reserved spots that are just sitting there empty while, you know, when people are looking for a parking spot and you're not going to have any place to park.
Those are private parking now anyways.
No, I understand that, yeah. But so I have a permit and I go downtown to park, I can't park there, right?
Because it's filled with... That's why, yeah. At least that's why I think...
It's a slippery slope and right now you got half the lot taken up with the police department, so it's like, you know...
Just adding that to, she's bought those permits for years. And over, she, she finally asked the park where, she asked me to buy the insurance company parking lot because she, her business is right alongside that. So in the evening hours, when it's dark out, when she leaves, be close to her. Isn't like she just came up with this idea, she's been paying the dollars. And, and now, uh, the fact that she's paying more than the State Farm, I'm pretty sure in the...
No, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with the permit. I'm just saying when you start reserving spots, then you're going to end up with a bunch of empty spots if nobody's at those businesses. And somebody's going to be coming downtown to go to something special flower shop.
And they're not going to be able to use that empty spot because it's going to have a certain name in it.
Schmoken's going through the same thing with reserving spots for people's homes. And it's, it's a nightmare out there. So what do you do? Is it ticket when somebody parks in, in, uh, the State Farm spot and they don't go in the State Farm? How do you, what's the price of the ticket for that?
I think, that's what I talked with Brad about that once, it's on the owner of the spot to basically say, to call then to report someone parking in their space.
If on the other room spot, it's called.
Joey, the way I see it though is it's a revenue stream too. So you're looking at a guaranteed income coming into the city, whereas you don't know if you're going to sell enough permits to fill every single one of those spaces. But if you sell 40 or 50% of them, that's a guaranteed income.
I mean, it's up to you, it's your decision. I'm just saying I think it's a terrible idea because you're, it's a slippery slope, soon you're going to have a bunch of empty spots and...
Well, not to be the factor, it's a percentage building there, and they get over, compensate for your concerns and everyone will be taking, there's always 60%.
Well, I mean, the police have already taken that percentage. The police, we have 14 spots for a six-man police office, I mean, right now. So it's like, it's already half used up just from the police department, you know, it's...
We aren't just talking about that one lot though, right?
No, this would be a policy overall for municipal lots, but I, I...
But that is the busiest, that's the busiest part of town too. That is, that is the busiest part of...
Yeah, I absolutely understand your concerns, that's why I kind of wanted to bring it out here and have a little discussion about it before I went down the road and write something. Because I do want to consider your concerns and it...
When they did Burger King and A+ you took half of the parking spots out of that lot. So you're, you're taking all the parking away from the downtown, that's, that's where we need it.
They're always using those parking lots. You know, okay, and here's something else, like selling permits and getting them off of market provides an access to a parking spot for the person who needs 15 minutes to run in here and pick something up. These people are parked all day long, we want to get them off market, get them into the parking lot.
Yeah, all right. And just real quick before we go into, uh, audience comments, one last announcement. Um, just a quick update regarding our hiring process. We are accepting applications until 30th of this month. Your next testing cycle is May 4th.
Please.
For the police department. And just so you are aware, it does take on average two months after the testing date to initiate a hiring of candidates. So, is there any other audience comments?
I applaud you, really gracious, being on Road Closers by U S. Um, I should applaud you for taking your time to rescue those neglected records of the city, Sun, uh, Sunbury Cemetery and leveraging them and making them available. Um, that, that tells me and many other people, if you are that concerned about the people that came before us to take care of their records, and that tells me that you're interested in bringing life into this community, and I applaud you.
Fred?
I have one quick announcement, um, Fred here. Citizen of Sunbury. Um, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday is the Shinklin's production of The Wiz. Joel's Daughter is in it, my son and my nephew are in it. Uh, anybody else that goes up here, but it's a, it's going to be a phenomenal show. Um, it's, you guys will get a chance, it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, 7:00, and Sunday at 2:30 every week. Reserve seats, 10 blocks right here in Mission Peak. And we, we, I'm going to tell you now that if you want to call down, put tickets at local because they are just about to build.
You say, is that Sunday also?
On Sunday at like 2:00. But they're filling up quick, so just making up, if anybody wants to get a chance to see it, I think happening, Broadway show, which high school students, please come down.
Thank you. Then you?
Um, I only, I, I did probably do work because I thought you just got down the parking lot off the market. Now, I have a business on our street and I please utilize, uh, good lot. And I'd be more than happy to buy spots for customers to park in that. Of course, there's no sign, anybody knows it's a parking lot, but that's another option. But I just wanted you to think about, when people are reserving spots for business, it should be for their customers, not for their employees. You mean, no, like we used to have the air slot, like, oh, great, you know, have a little spot there for little ladies and customers, and then they all go to the older ones. It should be, you know, that's...
By, same token, by the order of parking on the sideline, if you front their position is on, that's weird. So that means a little lady to park there, a dollar and a few cents.
Yeah, I'd just rather see more of an emphasis on the customer than employees that are parked inside the business. Exactly, you know, the malls, the malls and employees parking that.
True.
Anne Saxton, uh, I have just a question on one of your discussion items, the, uh, peddling or soliciting permits for charitable organizations. Uh, I just want to make sure I understand correctly that if an organization wants to hold some sort of fundraiser in the city, they may get the fee waived, but they still have to fill out an application.
Does not include fundraisers. So if money is being received, there are proceeds, that's not what I'm, I'm after exempting.
Okay.
Now, that doesn't mean, I guess, I don't know if the council would consider, you know, 4501(c)(3) trying to raise money, but that's not what I want to put in the art, that's not what I mean was for the ordinance. It was just for people where there are no proceeds, and he's just giving out meals, there's no money taken in and even has a fundraiser.
Okay, thank you.
Any other audience?
Lisa Saxton. Um, I noticed from the last couple of meetings, including this one, you made some announcements about community activities. Last two meetings were for SRI, tonight we're announcing that some of that's going to be happening at the Americas in the next couple of weeks. Is there a process for which community organizations or companies can get those out of...
You just contact City Hall and let us know. We can only announce what we're given the information of.
That's fine, I just didn't know it was such a thing.
Sunbury1ptd.net, you can send an email.
I do. Okay. I do.
Any other audience comments? All right, with that, thank you all for coming out and thank you to the Y H B A again for allowing the meetings now and then.